Testing one, two. Let me know when you get it up online. Well, welcome everybody here in the worship center, but also online and those who will watch during the week. We are glad you're continuing the Bible study. Tonight, we were beginning week 16. We're going to be studying Numbers chapter 1 through 10. So let's begin. We ended last week and I want you to continue by reaffirming these things. It helps you go begin to understand and it carries forth with you as you continue to read and go deeper into the Bible. We reaffirmed the covenant of Mount Sinai. God has given the law. He's given the 10 principles. Then we had, God gave the gift of the tabernacle. We watched the tabernacle. We read how the tabernacle was put together and all the different pieces, et cetera, and how it was very well defined. There's a good reason for that and we're going to learn more about that. We learned the instructions to how to use the tabernacle in Leviticus 1 through 7, the rules of the priesthood. Then we heard about that. Then the Israelites learned how to implement the law. Take the 10 principles and break them down into 613 specific commandments. 365 of those are thou shalt nots, matching the days in the year, and 248, matching the number of bones in the body, are for those thou shalt do's. So that's me beginning to understand that. It has been one month since they've been at the foot of Mount Sinai. Leviticus covers one month. Exodus covers one year. We are 13 months in at the beginning of Numbers. So that's, you know, we got another 1,500 years to go, but we're only 1,300 years, 13 months in right now as we begin. So as we, we're going to start moving towards the promised land. That's what we're, that's the whole, what's taking place now. So when you read Numbers, you saw on there the fact that the Lord spoke to Moses in the Tenepe meeting in the desert of Sinai on the first day, on the first day of the second month of the second year, 13 months, right? After the Israelites came out of Egypt, he said, "Take a census of the whole Israelite community by their clans," this is important, "clans and families, listing every man by name, one by one, and you and Aaron are to count according to their divisions, all the men in Israel who are 20 years old or more and able to serve the army. One man from each tribe, each of them, the head of his family is to help you." So begin by seeing Moses and Aaron there having to count and to write down every single name. A lot of paper, a lot of papyrus is going to be involved in this. Well, these are the names of the men that, you remember these names, don't you? The 12 descendants of Israel, this is where the 12 tribes, the 12 tribes are named. I'm not going to go through each one in detail, but we know, we began to see there's Moses took air in the day of the second month. He is, they begin to count and the count descendants of Reuben, they're 46,500, descendants of Simeon. So we start counting down the number of descendants, Iskar, Ephraim, Dan, Benjamin, each one, till we get to the very end and we get that these are the men counted by Moses and Aaron and the 12 leaders of Israel, each one representing his family. All the Israelites, 20 years or more, who are able to serve in the army, Israel's army were counted according to their families. The total number was 603,550. If you remember back about Exodus 12, we, they began, they first mentioned about the 600,000. Well, this is where this number, this is the number that we come up with. And remember, 603,000 men of fighting age, 20 to roughly 50 years of age, there will be 603,550 women. You know, if you watch the birth certificate, birth censuses, numbers, et cetera, it's pretty much a match, match. It's amazing how this matches.
What's the real purpose of Numbers?
Well, the numbers is to count.
Right, but I'm just saying what, it's like, it's like it's just stuck in there. I mean, I don't understand it was, you know, to count the 12 tribes, but it's just like, it just doesn't really.
What is the purpose of the book? We're getting into the purpose. It begins off with the census. It's letting us as a reader, us understanding the story, what I brought up earlier and the fact when we say, why is numbers there? Why do we need to see these numbers, et cetera? Because Abraham and Sarah, God gave this great, he gave this, you know, your children would be like the grains of sand, there'd be that. So, you know, God had to let the Israelites grow into a size that would even be witnessed within, in the world, and say, well, here are my people. It wouldn't work really well. He always says, here are my two people, or my four people. There's this 2 million people that is now God is making into becoming His people, you know, you'll be the kingdom of priests and a holy nation. So that's sort of, you know, that's, it's showing that and it's showing what is taking place and how this growth is happening. So it's just for better to understand. So we also did, we're not going to, you're going to see us count the Levites and the males who are a month older or older, it's 22,000. There's another number. So we know 603,000, 603,000, 1.2. We know there's 22,000 Levites, males, older. And I went very beginning, I told you how many roughly, how many, how many children per person has to get these numbers so we can roughly, we can safely say there are roughly 2 million people. This is one large group, one large crowd of people that they are gathered in the desert. That's just an amazing number to think about. Okay, the ancestral tribe of the Levites, however, was not counted along with the others. We see that they're not. Instead, appoint the Levites to be in charge of the tabernacle of the covenant law. So they are the ones in charge of the tabernacle of the covenant law and the fact they are the only ones who are going to touch it, to put it up or take it down. You can sit there and you're there helping in that day. You can't sit there and go, well, hey, can I help you? It tells you very plainly, anyone else who approaches is to be put to death. Only the Levites can touch or be involved in putting up and taking down. And that's important for us to understand and we'll understand it again, how they're stationed around the Tenepe meeting when we get done. The Israelites are to set up their tents by divisions. Each of them getting their own camp under their standard. The Levites, however, to set up their tents around the tabernacle of the covenant law so that my wrath will not fall on the Israelite community. The Levites are to be responsible for the care of the tabernacle of the covenant law. Why would you do that? You would, this, this, that site, that place, we know if you step into the, if you cross into it, you're going to be put to death. If your child walks into it, child, you're going to be put to death. Your dog or your, put to death. You do not, so that's, the Levites are there as that protective barrier, just in case you drank too much wine and you want to lean on, I'm going to lean on the fence, lean on the, you know, you'd be put to death. So that, you know, this is a way of protecting that area and keeping it that way. We also see the fact, and we'll see it, I think we'll see it later, the fact the Levites are not allowed, are not counted for a specific reason. We'll see why. The arrangements of tribal camps. Now, there is a very specific arrangement of how this is being put in place. And your handout, you can see the picture of, I'll give you some pictures and I'll show them up here on the screen. And when you look at that, so on the east toward the sunrise, remember the east side, what is on the east side? That is the entrance into Tenepe meeting. That's where you're going to bring your sacrifice to that east side entrance and there the priest is going to meet you and depending on what you're, what you're, what you're bringing forth, you're going to lay your hands on, pray over or whatever, and you're going to be bringing it, then they'll bring it in to the tent. You do not go in. That's what J.C.'s asked you, you do not go in. So we, yeah, none of it, only the Levites can step in, only the, those who are appointed priests. Now, all Levites are priests.
So they can't even, so where you have the wall around the tabernacle, they can't even go to the tent?
No, no one's allowed to, you can, anywhere behind that, that wall, you're not allowed to enter. If you enter into that, you're going to be put to death. And the only entrance is on the east side, facing towards the sun. So that's the, that's what, so the tabernacle, so it's always pointed in that direction. So we look at, so we begin to see the, we have the, on the east side, we see Reuben's camp, oh, I jumped ahead, sorry. The east side, da, da, da. And the sunrise, we'll see the camp of Judah to the camp there, we'll see the, you know, we'll see the, we'll see the different tribes are going to be, the Ishkar and Zebron. Zebron is going to be there also on the, again, the fact, and we see the number of what they're going to be. So they're going to be encamped there, et cetera. And so we see each of those step through there, we start seeing what that, how that is set up. The Tenepe meeting, the camp of Levites will be set in the middle of the camp. So that is right there in the middle of the camp is where the Tenepe meeting is. It's on that. So we see the Tenepe meeting, what, of how that is, and this representation shows you the tents set up around it, et cetera. All the men inside the camp of Ephraim, according to the vision, yeah. So on the north side, we see each of the sides where they are, where they're being placed and put in place into there. We finally come down and begin to look and see how they're set up. On the east side is Judah, Ishkar and Zebron. Now, this drawing, there's different variations of these drawings that you will see. This is showing the three tribes next door to each other, but most likely they were one tribe behind each other. You start taking 2 million people, and we know the size of the tabernacle. You could not put 180,000 people in the width of the tabernacle, of the Tenepe meeting. So we know that has to go back that, so that you're going to have, the tribes are going to be arranged out each, on each end, and what they, that, you will have the tabernacle there in the center. If you look at the numbers of who's on the north and the south, we begin, you know, and the fact that the, we begin to look at some people represented by giant cross, et cetera. You'll see some people talk about that if you study, et cetera, different, different, different translations, et cetera, and different theologians will address this different ways, but really this is what it is, it's laid out. So I want you to think about, why is God doing this? What is, what is going to happen? What is taking place when this is all taking place? So we're going to see here the Israelite encampment. Now, I want you to, you look at this encampment, what are you seeing? You're seeing like boulevards coming off the edges, you're seeing these walkways. So you're seeing, it's like a little road coming off of it, right? So we're beginning to see that in that structure of how that is, and this camp's going to be set up. There are standards. What is that, a flag is being placed in the ground. This is the, this is the family of Dan. This is the family of Judah. This is, you know, what family are you belonging to is where you're going to live and you're having, you're going to set your tents up in rows, et cetera, and who you're, you'll begin to know who your neighbors are. You're beginning to know, you're beginning to know who, who is in your family. Why? When they were, when they were in Exodus, when they were in Egypt, do you think the Egyptians, the Egyptians structured them and laid them out by family? No, you were pulled wherever you needed. I need, I need, come on slaves, I need you over here. I need you over there. I need you over here. So bringing them to all together in this community, they've taken them out of, out of Egypt, they bent the foot, they grumbled and complained in Sinai, and there they are. They've learned, now they've learned, they've gotten the tabernacle, they've learned the law, they've gotten, they've learned, they're learning the basics of, you know, becoming what it is to start becoming a community. They are not the, the community God wants yet. They have a long ways to go. So they're just at that very beginning. Then we see the Levites, this is the account of the family of Aaron and Moses. And I'm talking, Wayne, is the microphone okay?
I think he just figured it out.
The names of the sons of Aaron and Nabab and the firstborn of that, we're starting to see again, we're seeing who they are, who their sons are, et cetera, because it's going to, a member of the priest is going to pass down in the family of the Levites, beginning of Aaron, Aaron, beginning of Aaron and his sons stepping down. The Lord said to Moses, "Bring the tribe of Levi and present them to Aaron, the priest, to assist him. They have performed the duties for him and for the whole community at the Tenepe meeting by doing the work of the tabernacle." So all the Levites together are responsible for that. The Lord said, "I have taken the Levites from among the Israelites," this is key again, "I have taken the Levites from among the Israelites in place of the first male offspring of every Israelite woman. The Levites are mine, for all the firstborn are mine. When I struck down all the firstborn in Egypt, I set apart for myself every firstborn. In Israel, whether human or animal, they are mine. I am the Lord." Remember, we talked about that, the fact that when you're a firstborn male, you would bring, now you would bring him there to the, to Tenepe meeting. Later, we will see Joseph and Mary take Jesus to the temple for the cause he's the firstborn in the family. So that's any.
Question, Moses and Aaron, are they from the tribe of Levi?
The tribe of, yes. The question is Moses and Aaron from the tribe of Levi? Yes, that's why that's all, because then remember his two sons, Aaron's two sons are the ones who are the, are four sons, two of them are no longer with us, and the fact are the, where we begin to see the priest falling from one to the other. So yes, we had to make that assumption that they are, that they're, that they are all the same tribe on that. So we see the different, the four different tribes, or the, yeah, the four different tribes of the Levites. The total, they counted the Levites, there was 22,000, a male of a month or old or more. And the same thing is, then he went and counted all the firstborn Israelites, the total number of firstborn males a month or more old, 22,273. I'm looking for something. One thing about the Levites, they are not the fighters. That's why they're counting, what male, month or older, they are not counted, meant of fighting age, just as we think of, you think about where do we adopt some of the things we have in our own fa, own world today, priests, pastors, et cetera, chap, do not carry weapons. We do not fight. And that's part, that's, that tradition is beginning here and the fact that we carry it forward because we are there to serve God and we're not there to, we're here to have the comfort and care, we're not there to, to bring, to go into war on, in that respect. And the Lord, Moses is going to be told to bring, that they're going to bring a gift to redeem the 273 firstborn Israelites who exceed the number of Levites, collect five shekels for each one according to the sanctuary shekel. Because that's when there's more firstborn males than there are Levites, so they're going to have to pay up, they're paying, they're paying a fee, they're paying a gift to God for that, bringing it to the, that. So Moses collected redemption money from those who exceeded the number redeemed by the Levites, and he collected 1,365 shekels. My inquisitive mind wanted, I wanted to know how, how many, how much, how much silver is that? It's roughly 17.3 pounds of silver was collected as a result of that. So it's again, we had to think, remember, where do they get this silver? Where do they get the gold? When they left Egypt, they plundered the country and brought all of this with them. In Numbers again, we start, we start seeing, we start learning about more, take the census of the, of the different branches of the Levites, of their clans, and the, the Coethites at the Tenepe, are the care for the most holy things. At the Tenepe meeting, they're supposed to care for all the holy things within the Tenepe meeting. That would be the altar, the, you know, the, all the different things that are there, they're going to care for and, you know, that they will be responsible for. So they're going to, they're going to take down the shielding curtain and put it over the ark of the covenant. They're to cover the curtain with a durable leather, spread a cloth, a pure, a solid blue over that and put, put the poles in place. You remember the structure? This is, every single thing that they put together had a way of being interlocking and being put together. So now to move it, they had to, they have very specific instructions, how to take it back down, how to, how to transport it, et cetera. So we're seeing that. Or said Moses, "See that the Coethites tribal clans are not destroyed from among the Levites so that they may live or not die. When they come near the most holy things, do this for them." So they will be protected. They're going to be the ones that they're going to keep in the center and keep protected so they will not, so they will not be, if there's war or anything else, they are to be protected and cared for. The Gersonites, their service as a clan, to carry, and their work, they are to carry the curtains of the, of the tabernacle, that is the Tenepe meeting, it's covering, and it's outer covering, a durable leather, all those different things. So they're the ones that are going to carry it. So that family is a responsibility is to take it, take, is to take it down, care for it and transport it, et cetera. The Meridites, the fact that they're, they're part of their service, the tent, they are to carry the frames of the tabernacle, its crossbars, posts and bases, as well as the posts of the surrounding courtyard with their bases, tent pegs, ropes, all the equipment and everything related to their use. Assign each man the specific things he is to carry. So we're seeing that structure again come down. Each person is to be given a specific duty. In Numbers, chapter 5, you began to see what the, what it is to command, you know, what it is for them to keep the camp pure. We read, "Command the Israelites to send away from the camp anyone who has a defiling skin disease or a discharge of any kind who is ceremonially unclean because of a dead body. Send away male and female alike. Send them outside the camp so they will not defile the camp where I dwell among them." So we, again, we see this is what the beginning is, by time of Christ comes, those with the filing skin diseases, where they live, they live outside the cities. They live away from the communities, they're there, put aside. That's why we see those, the ones of, they'll say the lepers, it's between the translation or they'll just say, you know, "Jesus, help us, help us, help us." Well, that's because they're outside and Jesus will heal. We also see the restorations, the wrongs, and the tests for an unfaithful life. How'd you like that one? You know, I always think, where's the unfaithful man? Because that's a, that's a pretty, pretty darn tough test they have for, for women to be the unfaithful wife.
When you all test, if you always heard like how if someone had a skin disease, like a disease or, they had to be outside of the common area.
Let me stop you there real quick. J.C.'s asking a question about if you have a skin disease, that they'd live outside the common area.
Okay. I don't hear much of that after Jesus comes. Okay, so Jesus comes, he heals, he's great, he's wild. Okay, so Jesus comes, he heals, he heals wine, he heals everything. But after that, in the, after his crucifixion in the New Testament, you don't really hear this happening.
The isolation that, that we don't hear because it's not, it's not in Scripture.
Okay.
He's asking, after Jesus is, comes into this world, we see Jesus heal those, but again, the Jewish community continues on. So, you know, that, that is continued, that, Jesus is bringing the message to the Jewish community and to the Gentiles. But remember, not all of them believed in Jesus Christ, and the fact that they're the ones that are going to put them to death on that side, so that he did, he's turning the world upside down, and, and so to speak, but those traditions, etc., are continuing on. We know that because the temple will be destroyed in seventy, and Jesus foretold it, temple was never, never rebuilt. So the functions, the duties of the Levites goes away. Because without a temple, there is no, there are no sacrifices, there is no maintenance of it, all those different things. And we notice, in fact, you know, we will see God through prophets, etc., speak about building and creating, he will actually stop David from building it. David can plan it, design it, and everything else, he, because he, of what he, what David will do, he will be prevented from, and his son Solomon would actually construct the temple. We will see the temple get destroyed, and God inspire again through prophets, etc. The fact they'll rebuild the temple. But after seventy A.D., when this, when it, when that temple is destroyed, there is no more voice from God inspiring, say, the Jewish people to go and rebuild their temple. So that, so that sort of stops. And I want you to think about, in chapter, we're up to chapter five. God has taken these people away from everything they knew for 400 years, they were slaves, they had, they had a specific task, etc. If you're making bricks, you made bricks. If you're a, if you're a carver, you make, you carved. If you're a sower, you sowed. You have very specific, you're a cook, you're a cook. So you, and you lived in communities within, within family, by your family, in these different areas, right? So now they've been, been all taken up, they have been brought into this journey, kicking, well, sometimes kicking and screaming, complaining about everything, but God is providing for them, God is there with them. He is now, they have gone through, they've learned all those different rules, etc., they've counted the community, they've put it, they're now by clan, they're bowed by family, division by the family and by clan. So they're, they're the family of Dan. And then within the family of Dan, there will be multiple families within those family structures within there, and they're going to be organized, they're going to live in neighborhoods, they're going to be organized, their tents are going to be put up in an orderly fashion by clan, etc. Now you know who you are, who you belong to, you know exactly where you're going to live, and you know exactly what your role is. Don't we try to find that in life? We want to know who, you know, who we are, where, what, who we belong to, and we want to know what we're supposed to be doing. How many of us have grown up in life going, well, I'm still trying to figure out what I'm supposed to be doing? We all can laugh, we've all been there, and they sit there, years are questioning that, but now they have been given, and they've been defined, and they're broken down, and now they know, they know how, they know, they know who, they're now beginning to know who they are and who they belong to. And that's an amazing thing when you think about it. And this is what, you know, you start thinking, God understands us, and God is trying to bring them to become His people. Took a ruling mob, is now, they're getting organization, structure, etc. in there. Within your, in chapter six, we begin, we talk about the Nazarite vow. And we will see this Nazarite vow, we'll see different people take this throughout our journey, as we begin through the book, you know, said, if a man or woman wants to make a special vow, a vow of dedication to the Lord as a Nazarite, they must, so they want to say, you're going to live in a community, right? You got all your neighbors, your friends, and all your, all the family around you and everything else, and you're, you're hearing everything but God. You're like, I gotta get out of here. Right? You know, so, you know, it says, you know, I want to go deeper in my faith. I want to understand who God is. Today, we can do that by going to a monastic community. There are a lot of monastic communities around here, and the fact in which we can go to, and they're going to provide a place for us. They will actually provide, usually provide a place, a place to stay, and provide the meals for you, and you're going to come and spend a period of time in silence. And that's, you know, it can be a week, two weeks, a month, or longer. Well, Nazar, this is sort of taken off when we think of Nazarite vow. A Nazarite vow, you're going to, those, an individual can say, I want to take time to dedicate myself to the Lord, I want to go and pray and listen, and, you know, and, and, and go deeper. So they, to do that, they must, they're going to, they're going to step away, they're not going to stay, they can't stay in, I'm going to stay next door. No, you got to leave, you're going to leave, you're going to leave the community and go away that. And you must abstain from wine and other fermented drink, must not drink vinegar made from wine or other fermented drink, they must not drink grape juice or eat grapes or raisins as long as they remain under the Nazarite vow, they must not anything, eat anything that comes from the grapevine, not even the seeds or the skins. Wine. Wine is for celebration. When you go home, have a glass of wine, you don't, what are you getting it for? You're going to celebrate a wonderful meal? That's saying, we do, we do the same thing today, is that wine is there for celebration. We can see that in the New Testament, when Jesus goes to the wedding, he's going to turn water into wine, right? He begins his ministry turning water into wine. He's going to take six containers of water, which each hold thirty gallons each, he's going, he's going to turn that water into 180 gallons of wine for that, for that wedding. That is one heck of a party. But that's what they're doing. So you do not partake of it, you're not going to be utilizing that at all. When you're, I provided in your handout, and you can see it here, what, this tells you the things about a Nazarite vow, you're not going to cut your hair the whole time you leave. So if you're going to, if you're going to step away, you would take note of your, how long your hair is. And, you know, I don't think they had buzz cuts back then and things like that, you wouldn't, even you'd have any hair, it would be still there, some, and the fact, so you would have, you would, back then, they all had hair. But no, you, you, you do not, you're not going to cut your hair during that time. So you're going to do these things, and in fact, and so that gives you an idea of what they are. If you went to a monastic community, and you stayed there, you're not there, you're not going there, you're not, and you're taking the time of your way, you're going to be, you're going to be simplified, etc. You're not, you're not trying, you're not bringing your makeup, you're not going to go in the, if you went into the monastic community and went, went into the, used the restroom in your, where you're staying, in your cell where you're at, and you, and you went into the bathroom, there's no mirror. Why do you need a mirror? Only person you're coming to be there with is God. So we're not looking at, did you bring your Armani clothes? It's no, it is, you're coming there, and the fact you're spending time with God, etc. So you're going to do that as long as, and you're going to spend that time. So during the entire period, no razor will be used on their head, so they will not cut any of their hair. Throughout the period of their dedication to the Lord, Nazarite must not go near a dead body the same way. Gives you specific instructions. So it tells you what the things you're supposed to do as far as if someone dies in front of you, etc., what you're supposed to do, and how the cleansing, etc. When the now, when the law of the Nazarite, when the period that their dedication is over, they are to be brought to the entrance of tenet meeting, they are to present the offerings to the Lord, a year-old male without defect, etc. One thing they also provide at the entrance of tenet meeting, Nazarite must shave off the hair that symbolizes their dedication, they are not, they are to take the hair and put it in the fire that is under the fellowship offering. So they're going to come, if your hair grew an inch, you're going to cut an inch off on that. And that's what, that's what you would do, so you would be very seen that way. Yes.
Okay, so for the prohibition, I get not drinking wine because that's for Moses to celebrate, but why not eating the grapes?
Anything to do, that's, that's, this has to do with, nothing to do at all, it's, you abstain from it, you know, it's like making an excuse, I'm going to, I'm going to abstain from chocolate, but maybe, well, that's milk chocolate, I'll have dark chocolate. No, you abstain from chocolate, you abstain from chocolate. Well, I'll, I'll eat this, I'll eat the cocoa's. No, there is no, you abstain from, you abstain from every little, well, I'll eat the cocoa seeds. There, there, anything that encompasses, you're abstaining from it. We can justify our way around anything, but no, that's what's taking away, there is no, well, can I have grapes? Well, I'd just have raisins. No, I'll just have the seeds. No, you're not going to have anything to do with wine at all. So that's, that's what it means to abstain. And that teaches us, us too today, when we say we're going to abstain from something, well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to speak of a holy tongue at all times except for that SOB. Now, there is, there is no, there is no, there is no, if you abstain, you abstain from all of it, and that's what you do. Now, in the, in the, in the, in our journey, we're going to meet three lifelong Nazarites that I know of, and who do you think they would be? And you, I gave, they're on the paper, tells you exactly who they are. But when we think about the, that, like, you know, first there is Samuel. His, his, he is, his mother is unable to have children, she's, she's barren, praise to God, if I, if you let me, his, her, her husband's mistress, his other, other wife is popping out babies left and right, she's here with nothing. Lord, if you let me, if you let me have a child, I will dedicate that child to you. So she dedicates Samuel to God. When Samuel gets three years of age, and he's weaned from, weaned from her, he's brought to the temple, Eli takes her, and Eli will raise her, raise Samuel up. The second one we think of is in Judges. And you may think of Victor mature, way back from that, for those older, well, none of you are old enough to remember them, maybe Moses might be back there, old enough to remember. But we think of Goliath. And the fact that Goliath again was, his mother was unable to have children, if you let my Lord, you let me have, give me birth, I will dedicate my child, and Goliath was given, was, became a Nazarite.
Samson.
Samson, yeah, Samson, I'm sorry, good grief, Samson, where did I get Goliath at? Samson came, his job was to overcome the Philistines, right? So where did his power come from? His hair. But who did, what did Samson do the whole time? He was a womanizer. And then he ends up with Delilah, and of course, Delilah keeps asking, where did your strength come? Where's your strength from? Now, we look at Samson, and we think of Victor mature, when we think, oh, someone newer, we think maybe it's young Arnold Schwarzenegger, right? You know, somebody powerful muscles, etc., because his power, you know, but his power came from his hair, not from the fact that Sam, Sam, he didn't wake up and start, Samson would start doing exercises, he didn't put a book out and watch my videos, on the fact on that, he was, you know, it was, his, his power was in his hair. And when Delilah, he finally tells Delilah what it is, I think of Samson probably looked more like Pee-wee Herman. Because his power was in the hair. If you think about it, and we'll talk, the next one is, is John the Baptist, right? Elizabeth couldn't have children. Zechariah, they prayed, etc. Elizabeth was pregnant, and he could not talk. And so that, and so there it is. Of course, John the Baptist, he wore camel hair. And the fact, so if you're, you know, you know, that we think of, well, we wear wool is not too bad, but camel hair is, if you run around a camel, one, it stinks to high heaven, but even you make it not stink, because even, because even sheep smell, but you can wash it and clean it, etc., but camel hair is very, very coarse, there's no making it, weaving it, pulling it fine to make, you know, to make it really fine. So he's wearing this camel hair coat, a big, a big leather belt tying it together. He lives in the, in the wilderness because Samuel, Samson, and John do not live in community. They live outside of community, they live a very simple and barren life, they're dedicated to God. John is eating locusts and wild honey. Now, we can say locusts is grasshoppers, but no, I think it's more, well, what I, theology is that, when I was in Israel, etc., like, multiple times, they pointed out if there is a locust pod, and there would have been also eating some locusts, but think about it, you know, if you had to survive on grasshoppers, you're going to starve. There are not a lot, you know, there's not, there's not a horde around them, it's like there're not 10,000 of them just sitting there, so you can just be, you know, that, if you're in Israel, you're not going to see all these locusts everywhere, so you're not going to see that. So he would have been very thin, very, a very thin person, etc., because he's not, he's, he's not, he's not, there's not, there's not, he's not eating Burger King. So that's what they all are, so they thank on that. So that's what we look at, that's what we see. So Samson's power was in his, that. Samuel, his gift was as a prophet. And of course, John, we know his, his gift was to bring the message and to make the way for Christ our Lord. So that's what, you know, there was very, there was very specific power. Now, the thing is, I, I love this picture. I sit there going, I asked the question, what's wrong with this picture? Well, you know, Samson, that's, you know, look at those, look at those muscles, you know, look how big he is. It must take, he must, probably takes about 7,000 calories a day just to feed him. That's how many, how many locusts would that be? You know, you know, I mean, he, he took two gallons of honey, just to, you know, just to sustain himself, and Samuel, etc. Now, what's the other odd thing about them? Look at their beards. They have not shaved, they have not cut their hair since birth. They got manicured hair, and look how, and how long their hair is. Their hair, their hair, by 30 years of age, your hair is going to be down to your knees or your feet. And you're going to have to braid it and everything else, the same thing in your beard just to be able to walk. But we, all the pictures you go look at are always, they're look manicured and clean cut and everything else. John must have been scary to see he's bringing, here is this, you know, he's out there preaching this, etc., come and repent of your sins, come be baptized, come to the water, and you know, repent and return back towards God, I will baptize you again and bring you back closer to Him. So he's out there, you know, a thin, squirrely looking guy, preaching this, etc. He does not look like, I don't know where his camel hair is, that's a very nice camel hair coat he's wearing, and the fact, I mean, so you're sitting there going, what are they doing? But this is, we put these things in our image of things, and we, and we, we see movies, etc., that all of a sudden, I want you to think about it and going, no, that's not exactly right. We get to the point of, we get to priestly blessing. And I put this in your handout, and the fact I want you to pay attention to it. Tell Aaron and his sons, this is how to bless the Israelites. Say to them, the Lord bless you and keep you. Sound familiar? The Lord make His face shine on you and be gracious to you. Sound familiar? The Lord turn His face towards you and give you peace. This is many times where we pull our, our blessings, etc., come from our Old Testament But it's a very wonderful blessing to think about that we tell anyone, the Lord bless you and keep you, the Lord make His face shine on, on you and be gracious to you, the Lord turn His face towards you and give you peace. So our job, and our job is also turn our face towards God, to the Lord, and pay attention. There'll be offerings of the dedication to the tabernacle, Moses finished setting up the tabernacle, he's anointed the consecrated in all its furnishings, they will be, they'll have five days of offerings they bring before they begin their first move. The Lord will tell to Moses to speak to Aaron and say to him, when you set up the lamps, see that all the seven lamps on the area in front of the lampstand. Remember, we had pictures, we, before we talked, we were in, learning about the, the tabernacle, the gift. We talked about the lampstand, and what kind of oil you put in the lampstand, you put in olive oil, right? Because it's, it's, it's smoke. Because it's, it's smokeless. But you see a little bit more here about the lampstand. Aaron did so. He set the lamps, lamps, so they, they face forward on the lampstand, so just as the Lord commanded Moses. This is how the lampstand was made. It was made with hammered gold with its base, to its blossoms. The lampstand was made exactly like the pattern that the Lord had shown Moses. We don't get a full detail in the, in the trans, any of our things. But if, though, it is going to reflect forward, we know the, the, when it says the blossoms, it's going to come up, and that, like you cup your hand, think about, you know, the bottom of your hand, the palm, will be the base, and the oil be placed into, into, into a place in the bottom of your hand, and your hand's curving up. It's gold, it's now going to reflect the light forward. So it's not just, it's like a simple candle, in which you have, you have the oil there and the wit coming up, and it's lighting all the way around. It is made so that, well, actually, when it's lit, it's focusing that, the light forward into the, into the area. So it's not behind it, it's what's going before it. So that's, I think, is very interesting, think a little bit more about when we see that. Again, when you see things, et cetera, you'll start going, oh, that's not right. You know, I've always liked, that's why I hate watching movies, a lot of that, some of the new ones out, because I start, I'm sitting there picking them, all these little pieces out going, that's not right, that's not right, that's not right. So we're going to set apart the Levites. This is where I was saying, four. Take the Levites from among all the Israelites, and make them ceremonially clean. To purify them, do this. Sprinkle the water of cleansing on them. Then have them shave their whole bodies and wash their clothes. That must have been an interesting sight. They are, they are taking all the hair off their bodies, so that they will purify themselves and have them, and take a bull, et cetera, green offering, et cetera, each of those things. The Lord said, this applies to the Levites. Men twenty-five years old or more shall come to take part in the work of the tenta meeting. But the age of fifty, they must retire from the regular service and work no longer. Retirement plan's already in place. This is some of the things that we think about. Biblically, we pull many things we do in our non-socialist country that we live in, that we are, do socialist things. The fact of how we look at retirement. That we set, we set a retirement age and put those in place. There's a retirement for them, and the fact where they step back. They may assist their brothers in performing their duties at the tenta meeting, but they themselves must not do the work. This is then how you are to assign the responsibility of the Levites. So they breaks it all the way down. As we enter into nine and ten, we'll see again, in the beginning of nine, we'll see celebrating the second Passover. And then the pillar of cloud and fire. We learn about God being there, et cetera, what takes place, using the two silver triumphs, and departing from the mount of trumpets, and departing from the Mount Sinai. So we learn about the Passover again, this is the second Passover. The Lord spoke to Moses in the desert of Sinai in the first month, in the first month of the second year after they came out of Egypt. That's, again, this is where you're going to do it, the first month of the, every year. This is, so this is thirteen months in. Have the Israelites celebrate the Passover at the appointed time. Celebrate at twilight on the fourteenth day of this month. In accordance with the rules and regulations, and you all have the calendars, et cetera, and you'll find this follows right along of it, then God gave specific instructions of how you're supposed to celebrate. We learn about God's presence again. On the day of the Tabernacle, the tent of covering, the tent of the covenant law was set up, the cloud covered it. The cloud is God's, God's there, right? Whenever the cloud lifted from above the tent, the Israelites set out. Whenever the cloud settled, the Israelites encamped. So they're going to, they're going to, they're going to, if God is present, the cloud is there from evening till morning. The cloud above the Tabernacle, above the Tabernacle will look like fire. Then it's having, and so that's, they're going to see, they'll see, they'll see the cloud in the daytime, but they'll see, they'll see the fire within it at night. So if the cloud is over the Tabernacle, you stay. When it lifts up, you begin to move, as long as the Lord's, as the Lord, as the, the cloud will move up, God will move forward, and the Israelites will begin to move at the Lord's command. The Israelites set out, at His command, and at His command, they encamp. So they will begin, it will lift up, God will say, let's go. He will move forward from them until the point of saying, okay, this is where we're setting back down. When God, so they set the Tabernacle all back up, so all those Levites, every specific, they take all those things, put it all the way, put it all the way back up again, put it all, put it all in structure, et cetera, put it, reassemble it all. And God would settle back on that. When the cloud remained over the Tabernacle for a long time, the Israelites obeyed the Lord's order and did not set out. They would just stay. So God is leading them on this journey. So sometimes only a few days, and sometimes it'd be a longer period of time. Then the Lord said to Moses, make two trumpets of hammered silver, and use them for calling the community together, and for having the camp set out. When both are sounded, when both are sounded, the whole community is disassembled for you at the end of the tenta meeting. I wonder how long that took, how many times that took place. Both of those going, two million people trying to assemble there at the tenta meeting in front. And they're going, that's going to be one heck of a crowd in there. If only one is sounded, the leaders, the head of the clans, of Israel, assemble before you. So the one blast would say, okay, bring all the leaders together. And that's, you know, I love the structure of this, because I'm military. I'm a former officer, and the fact, and I see everything that's taking place. I think, I think of our ways of rules, et cetera, the things we have. This is very much the same thing. You called, if you're going to call the soldiers before, many times you just call, you call the, you call the captain, all the leadership of that, come before the colonel, and you will learn your orders, et cetera, and go back and spread, and tell everybody what you're going to be doing, et cetera. So when we use, we use trumpets, we use all those things to do that. But this is a way of bringing order and organization to the community. So when they hear these, they would know exactly what they're going, what they're going to do. When the trumpet, if trumpet is sounded, the tribes camping on the east are to set out. The sounding of a second blast, the camps on the south are to set out. The blast will be the signal of setting out. To gather assembly, blow the trumpets, but not with the signal for setting out. So there's different tones, et cetera, they're going to use, you know, when they move. So it's not just a straight one sound. They're going to use different sounds to make their step forward. Tells you who's supposed to blow them, et cetera, step through. You're starting to see all that, how that works. So now we're getting down into the, where the fact, on the twelfth, twentieth day of the second month of the second year. So there were, so we're at fourteen months, right? Twentieth day, we're thirteen, thirteen, thirteen days, thirteen months and twenty days. The second year, the second year, the cloud lifted from above the Tabernacle of the covenant law. Then the Israelites set out from the desert, out from the desert of Sinai, traveled from place to place until the cloud came to rest in the desert of Paran. They set out for the first time at the Lord's command through Moses. And I think, did I give you? I'm going to give you a map. And what you want to think about, if you remember where they are, the foot of, from that foot of Mount Sinai, on the, on the last map I gave you. They're going to set out for Paran. And the fact, we've learned about the trade routes, right? Well, they're not going the straight route. They can't go on the trade routes. The Moabites are going to come after them, et cetera. The king's going to say, no, you're not getting on my road. I control it. And so that, they could, you know, so they're going to be, they're going to be restricted, and be pushed back, and not go be, while they're going to wander a little bit, and then that. So again, we follow again the divisions. The camp of Judah went first, et cetera, step by step. And then Reuben, blah, blah, blah. We see all the fun things, we start seeing those. Now, Moses said the whole about, so we're stepping forward. But Moses says, please do not leave us. He's talking, God, you know where we should, we should camp, in the wilderness, and you can be our eyes. If you come with us, we will share. He's talking about his to his family, his in-laws. And the fact, but they, they are going to set out from the mountain to the Lord and travel three days. The ark of the covenant, the Lord went before them during those three days to find a place to rest. The cloud, the Lord was over them by day, and when they set out from the camp, is where they begin this journey. So we're beginning a journey. We're beginning the journey, here's the map. And we're down here at the bottom, and the bottom, bottom point with that, we're going to be setting up and going up the direction we are. If you look up, if you look very closely, you see desert of Zen, et cetera, you can see, uh, the trade route is on the right side of the mountain. And that's what they're not, they're having to go around, and they'll go up and get repelled, and they'll continue forward. So that's how they're going to have to travel. They cannot travel on the major, major roads or trade routes because they're going to be threatened, and they'll become in places of battle, et cetera. So they set out on that, says, and Moses said, rise up, Lord. May your enemies be scattered. May your foes flee before you. Whenever it came to rest, he said, returned, Lord, to the countless thousands of Israel. They're on this journey to become the kingdom of priests and a holy nation. So I hope that's, you know, so you're beginning to see, again, all the things that are taking place in this short amount of time, that God is laying the foundation for everything we're carrying forward up until the time of Christ. And Christ is going to take this, in many ways, turn it, He's going to take these holy people, holy nation, and going to open it up to the world, that God loves all of us. And it's a great, a big, great step in movement is what's taking place. But for us to understand what they've gone through, how they're becoming, and to see them and witness them and begin this journey, we're going to learn a lot as we go on. On that, so, and as we go on, we'll get into, we'll jump forward into the New Testament, and continue to go deeper in what we're seeing. So we're seeing all that, the order in the camp, tribe and instructions for movements. There, so now we're beginning. The census has been taken, we know how they are, we know how they're structured. That's partly why the census, we had to move them into, into families and clans, et cetera. Brought them all together, they get, they're given purpose, they're given who's doing what, where they live, who their surrounding family is, who they associate, you know, so all those things are happening. So when they, each time they move, they settle back down, they're going to put themselves back in the same way. You know, the Smith family is on this street, the Smith family A on this street, Smith family B's on this street, this, you know, that. So you're going to put your tents up in rows, et cetera. And the fact, if you've ever seen a military encampment, everything's put in by company, by platoon, et cetera. They're very much, this is the exact same kind of structure. And it gives you very much comfort when you arrive and you have to go somewhere and go that, you know, we're going to run to C. You're going to say, oh, go find the platoon leader for Company C. You're not going to, you're not running everywhere. You know Company C is here. I got to find, go find the leader of the family of Dan. Go find the leader of the, go find the family of, go find, in the family of Dan, bring me the clan leaders. And so you would know where the clan leaders are, and be able to find them. And again, if you lived in the camp, you're going to, you're going to, if you went to the Tabernacle, the tenta meeting for something, or you went, you had to go over to another, to another family, you would know exactly where you're going, and you, you didn't need GPS. You knew exactly the structure, who was where, how to find them, et cetera. Because again, even though they're now being by family and clan, these were people who lived for four hundred years in a, in a non-structured community. So they're going to have friends and all those other families throughout the encampment, and they'll keep those connections. So that's what I think about. Let's close in prayer, prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for your presence. And we ask you to continue to guide us, and continue our study as we go deeper with you. Lord, open our eyes and ears as we, we learn and begin to see this wonderful thing that you're doing, and understanding this journey where we're, where we're asked to go. Lord, we ask all this to your son, Jesus Christ our Lord, amen. You'll notice in your handout the fact, they have been given the tools and instructions to become a kingdom of priests and a holy nation. As you read eleven through thirty-six, this is through the end of Numbers, reflect upon your own journey to become a disciple of Jesus Christ. When they go squirrel, have you ever gone squirrel? Amen.